Mike, President. John, Eric, Kevin. Here. Political allegiance.
Political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
All right. Fairly good. Someone want to move on to send agenda?
Yeah. Well, the library board is supposed to be here, and they were gonna go first, but they're not, so we'll leave that one. But we need to table nine A and B for the next meeting.
Motion for the Senate General with the table of nine A and B.
So moved.
Motion go second.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Both. The public can put this time in place for discussion items now already on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. Travis, you got anything?
I got nothing for that.
Travis, you got anything?
No, I got nothing.
All right. Put the presentation rose.
This is being difficult again. So Travis, with the weather moving in, I sent the guys home today, so I'm gonna give his presentations for him. I should be able to answer anything that you have, questions that you have. We'll start with the expenditures. Just listen to page two at the top. Salary and wages is the first thing. Obviously, you can see where we're at for salaries and wages, probably right on pace for the 110. Obviously, with the new position and the wage increases, I bumped that up to 135. A lot of this stays the same. You go down to maintenance, repaired utilities, under building maintenance. You'll see a note that I added there during a insurance inspection about a year ago. They've requested in the future to start looking at rewiring the Dolan Building, maintenance shed, because it's pretty old. So we're gonna start that project there. You can see there's 2,000 budgeted, I bumped that up to seven. We're hoping to get half of it done this year, maybe with a panel or something like that to start with, and then actually do the wiring. Whatever I create will be needed on that following here. Grounds maintenance increased by $2,000. They'd like to put some more cement down at the city shop where they're doing for the salt, salt area, if they're just outside of that area.
How about fix the driveway up to the Dolan Building?
That's, I think that's the area, Dolan.
Oh, the Dolan area? I mean, that's not bad. I mean, we could talk on that one.
Okay. Everything else, if you go along that. The only difference is gonna be down at street maintenance supplies. Last year, we had an extra, we were able to get an extra little salt on last year, so this next year, we'll be back to, as you can see, in the 22, 23 budgets, 23,000. We budgeted 24, that's for the two shipments of salt. You can see the price for that there, who knows? Engineering went down a little bit in. Insurance expense, that's gonna be across the board on all these categories, you're gonna see that go up, and that's just the nature of it. Street maintenance, we did go down slightly, but that's gonna be for steel coating, crack sealing. That line's for. Minor equipment. We did repair the plow for the 550. Travis would like to get the plow for the 550. So that's $9,000, you'll see that in there. However, that line items drastically decreased from last year anyway. If you remember, we took some of the unload ground there. And then operating supplies, street paint, we kept that the same. We still have some to do this year, we're right on pace for that. Ultimately, we are at 327, 327,000. Last year was 340,000, so they're gonna spend less there. Go to the next page, be, well, first off, see if any of you have any questions on that? The next area of traffic is gonna be just for ongoing maintenance or supplies needed for the traffic light, that's always $1,000. You see some years we don't spend, some years we do. Transfers, this is capital improvement for 10,000. Then you see the totality there is $338,000 for the whole entire budget. If you go to...
About 13,000.
What's that?
About 13,000.
13,000?
Yeah, our budget's 351.
Oh, yes.
338.
338, yep. So that is all I have for that. We're anticipating about 350 coming in for a real use tax, so we're still pretty good there.
Where we put the money that came from the highway third transfer estate to us?
So that is in this account.
Yes, this account, right.
If you look on your treasury report, that'll be in 110, which shows like a million and one.
Yeah.
That's right down there.
Okay.
You spend it all. That's what I was worried about. You spend it all.
All right. That's it for roads, Doug. Water? All right. So on water, this one starts out with the revenues. We are asking Maggie from Spirit Financial about if we need any type of increase this year in reference to the bond payment cycle. As of right now, I'm going forward as though we don't. You can see our actual year-to-date so far is 217,000, so I went ahead and put 434, which would be doubling that, because this is through 50% of the year. So I'm putting that down as a reestimate, and then we will move forward, and then I will get Maggie's opinion, and then obviously, you guys will vote that in July if you so choose. You can see really nothing, it's pretty straightforward on all that stuff. 470,950 is where we're sitting for revenues. Go to the next page, this is expenditures. Keith was hired as an extra person, 40% of his salary is coming out of water, so you're gonna see the biggest increase here in water for salaries.
Was any part of his in roads?
Some of it, like 10%?
10% of the roads?
40, 30, 20, 10. And that was water, sewer, cemetery, 20% was roads, and then cemetery was 10%. So we'll go down to utilities or repair and maintenance under utilities. There's nothing there that's really changed. It's feeling down a little bit all the way across there. That's just kinda average, and we're sitting for the year, and you can see all those are about 50% of what we've had budgeted. Engineering expense, we did lower that again for that. We will use, utilize some engineers for, we have three projects we're gonna be doing out of this budget, and this is the in-house projects to save money. One is gonna be the private line for running the main behind Lloyds that goes over to feed the apartment complex that we have to replace. The other project is gonna be on Main Street between Jefferson and Chestnut, replacing that deep water main. And then the third project is going to be at the sports complex, we need to run a main up into where the ball dimes are going from the street. It's about 600 feet out into the middle for that new concession stand ultimately will be. And that's to feed that portion of the property with irrigation and all of that, so...
We're hiring that next year.
This budget. So we'll have a little bit of engineering expense with that. Insurance, again, you can see last year, we're 10,758, I bumped that up to 12,000, just with that increase, plus it'll probably be a little bit more this year. Everything else is pretty good across the board. You can see down here, under contractual services, we're lowering that amount, basically 7,500 is a pretty considerable savings, and that would allow us, in the worst-case scenario, if we need wrecking in town for some critical water main breaks, that will cover about two of those a year. So you can see how much we're saving in-house with that.
How much we're hoping to save.
Oh, yeah.
Correct. We'll have to see after this.
Next page, minor equipment. We wanna get 10,000 worth of meters this year, so it'll be 10,000 water, 10,000 sewer, that comes out of each of them for new meters. Those are the radio reeds. And then operating supplies, this is going to be for the three projects, 70,000. Right now, quoted out, these two projects are probably pushing 300,000. So there's a significant savings by doing these in-house that you're gonna see based on doing these in ourselves. So that's the operating supplies, so that's gonna be for all your fittings, your pipe, everything for those three projects.
The radio reeds, do you happen to know what percentage you've put us at?
I don't know. Christina, do you have a...
I thought we were pretty close to done.
Do you know where we're at with the radio reeds? How many are there?
I would put us at about 85 to 90% already.
Okay, cool. Now, you know what radio reeds are? Basically, instead of them going out, have to check them here, they can just go to their computer and hit the button, and they'll read along.
They'll go over.
Then just the note that you see, the one on Main Street, the operating supplies, I kinda handed it there, 41,000. So we're gonna save pretty close to 100,000 just on the Main Street project. The sports complex is about 22,000. That was right around 100,000 is what they've quoted us at. And then I don't have a quote for behind Jackson Street or behind Lloyds, but when you add these two together, it's about 7,000 in supplies, what we'll need for that. But I don't have the savings that we have there, so... And this also does include the rental for whatever equipment we would need. When we do Main Street, we're gonna want a bigger machine just to speed up the process, they'll have less inconvenience for the residents, which we already knew we were gonna do that anyway. But this way, it'll, it'll shrink the time where they're working and their inconvenience under highways and whatnot, so... As you can see there, go to the next page, then you get into your bond payments and transfers. That's for obviously the water main project, and you can see we're at 501, 380. If you go back to our revenues, we're at 470. However, keep in mind, there's, there's water money that goes towards projects that we just need to transfer in, that town is very healthy, so I'm very pleased with where this is sitting, especially doing three projects like that. Keep going through the water ones, these are just transfers ins and outs for our payments. Bond principal payment, interest, bond fees. And your utility deposits, they come in and out. Any questions for water?
You wanna start it there and be rich?
Yeah, if you want.
No, you don't have to sit here to know this.
Hey, I love hearing about all these projects, it's so great. Thank you for giving me a second.
What we're gonna do is we're gonna move you up in this. So we're gonna move, stop there, and we'll go 6D, we're gonna go up.
Great, thank you, Doug, I appreciate it. Councilmen and, or folks, I just wanted to let you know, we've gone through the interview process, and we have found a very qualified candidate for the Lisbon Library. And her name is, I'm sorry, Brayden, her name is Elizabeth, what's her last name?
Hoover Day. Yeah, but they both.
Hoover Day Calhoun. We were at, the hiring committee that was interviewing was very impressed with this candidate. She comes really qualified from the Des Moines Public Library, she has a good community experience, and she has lots of good ideas. She's well ingrained in the library system with the Library of Iowa, and we feel that she'll be an awesome candidate. I'll tell you a little aside, I woke up the next morning at 4:00 AM, and I was, I was so excited about some of the ideas that she planted in our heads that night that I just, I couldn't sleep anymore. So it was really exciting.
And she agrees to take it if we give it to offer?
Is that correct, Randy?
Yes.
Sorry, no, we already...
Yeah.
We offered her the position at $24 an hour, 32 hours a week. She's accepted, the only thing, I have not heard back yet on is a start date. She was checking with whatever formality she has to go through at her current position. She's competing from North Liberty to Des Moines every week and staying with friends out there. So she's gonna give them notice, and she was gonna get back to me. She talked the 22nd, which is a Monday, the 29th, which is a Monday, or the absolute latest, which would be February 5th, which is also a Monday. So I anticipated meeting the 22nd or 29th, but I won't hear back from them.
Any motion to hire?
Someone second.
Motion on the second. John.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
All right, thank you so much, I appreciate it. I was very proud of the library, so I think it's good news. When you meet her, Mike, I think you'll be really excited. It was very exceptional people there over the, over the time. This'll continue.
Very, she's very wholesome, I love it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Rich.
Covering up?
Yep. All right. Revenues, they're pretty straightforward, as you can see, what we're on pace for is about 380,000. So that's what I'm gonna forecast the budget to be. Go to the second page under expenditures. Again, there was 30% of Keith's salary is coming out of sewer, so you'll see a spike there, up to 150,000. Same goes with our employee benefits, remember, we have that levy, which is either 112. However, for services, we charge, we can't levy for. So on 70% of his salary has to be paid out of each account because of that. So that's why some of these, you're gonna see employee benefits filled out, and some of them you're not. The ones that you don't, we're levying for those, you'll see on me once when it comes down for that, you'll notice that. Training and staff development, we did increase staff by 1,500. Travis, now that we have an extra body, we'd like to get some people away to do some training, so we're gonna take advantage of that. Repair maintenance and utilities, everything here is pretty straightforward. Actually, a little bit of a decrease there.
With any of the ongoing maintenance, you know, like you're talking about putting cement down there, would that be for that too?
No, this is gonna be, he's gonna leave some money in there, I believe he's got two doors down at the sewer, that he wants to take care of. But no, that would be, maybe that comes out of roads for those buildings. Buildings for water sewer would be like water tower, sewer play, I'll check.
Who changes the bulbs now on the water tower? I realize I'm way off the subject.
Do they have a company that...
Company comes in.
You know.
You wanna do it?
Dolan always did it.
No, Dolan.
Down below, we did lower engineering, but raised insurance, but like I mentioned earlier, that just kinda goes up. The telemetry, we did lower it a little bit. As you can see, we're staying pretty consistent, around 62, I did put it to eight, in case there's any increase there. Other contractual services, this is for sludge removal. You'll see it, a couple of years ago, it was 15,000 per time, now it's at 21,000 per time. So that's what that's there for. Minor equipment, this would be the other half of the meters. You can see we lowered it, but we bought the sampler and the inloader, so we don't have to be tripping so much anymore. And operating supplies would be for anything that we're doing. If we can, if we can put in the sewer out of the sports complex, we may come back and change this a little bit to keep that house too, but we'll have to see how that, how that goes. So you see 4,001, 550 for the expenditures. That's still within 20,000 of what we're forecasting to take in. However, when you go to the next pages, this June, which would be in our current budget, we're making one of the last payments on one of our loans, which is a $74,000 payment. So we're gonna have some pretty significant savings there. And then we're gonna meet with Maggie to go over potentially seeing if we can pay down some of the other, we have two other ones that we can try to pay down. They're not, technically, you can't pay them off until 2028, we'll check to see if we can just pay early on if that is a penalty or not. So we can get back to you on that, but... So if you go through the transfers out page, again, that's transfers in, transfers out for those payments. And then bond payments, again, this would be forecasting a double payment on the two remaining, that's the 74,000. You can see even paying a double payment still lowers what we've been paying by about 35,000. And that's paying on double on the other one. So 88, 160 would be the absolute max, and it's a potential, it would be about 30,000 less than that if we can't pay double. And then we will discuss with her if there's any type of raise increase needed, or forecasted per the bond payments that she laid out. And that's all I have for sewer.
Any questions on sewer? Can I tell the boys?
All right. So I did meet with the company to discuss purchasing the garbage truck, or that was one of the requests that was made. If we decide to do it down the road, it's about $55 per canister, we need two canisters per resident, 480 residents or services, so that would be 960 boxes at $55 apiece. And then the truck, what we would need is 390,000 for the truck. One thing he said, that with the new trucks, there's a lot of new emission laws and rules that the trucks are designed to have now, and they're problematic, especially since everything's new. And his fear is that when something like that happens, it could be a small fix, but you're out of service, and then even the rental truck, street department get to now. He did say it'd take one person, you can do all the trash in one day, and then recycling the other day for the top of our side, so...
So you're looking at basically 450,000 for the truck and the canisters?
Correct, yeah, I was figuring 475, but yeah. And then you got your body and your time for doing it. As long as we weren't doing projects, and it wasn't in the winter, like a snowstorm, you know, I...
450,000 and we'll pay 241 right now?
Yep. So anyway, I just, just so you guys know, I did do the labor on that as much as I could. If it's something you wanna pursue further down the road, or at least have a discussion, let me know.
Two days? I don't know what it costs, but don't we have to pay the dumping fee then at the dump too?
You'll have the dumping fee, now it's my understanding, on the recycling, you actually get a little money back, I don't know if that's still a thing. I didn't go into the weeds and all that, but yes, you would still have to pay whatever fees there would be to develop that.
Getting harder to really predict whether we can get any money for the recycling, or maybe having to pay somebody to take the recycle.
But you're, you're talking one truck, so if they take the garbage out, then they gotta clean that truck, pick up all the recycling. You gotta pick the recycling up.
That's why you said it'd be like a two-day...
And then you got a man...
You got half an employee too.
You got one employee for two days.
So anyway, if you want to pursue that later on, or whatever, just let me know. I don't think it's any secret, we are having some issues with Johnson County, I'm working really diligently with them. I'm also looking at potentially getting quotes for another company, just 'cause it seems like I babysit this every Thursday, as far as like going and driving around town and checking the goods, trying to arrange pickups on days that aren't scheduled, so...
What's their, what's been their problem? I mean, we've been there and broke that buck with them, and all of a sudden...
Well, they...
These are different owners.
They were, they were bought out by Lake Shore Side, near Chicago, and it's my understanding that a lot of the drivers quit. Their routers are in their phones or their scanners, and it's just, they're, they're trying to train the new people, and I've, this has been since probably August, it's been significant. Like I said, I'm doing the best I can to work with them and help them, and I know the city staff, the public works, has gone out and picked up yardways, they've gone out and picked up canisters, dumped them in our dumpsters, just 'cause they're the ones and twos that call late, and the truck that already been here to pick up somebody else's, and they weren't coming back again, so... It has gotten better as of late, but there's still, still issues and concerns, and I just, they're gonna have to really do something to show some trust. I will say though, that as of last week, which was a Friday pickup, I don't recall the issues from this last week, so like I said, it has, it has improved some, but we'll see how it goes. We're still on a contract till 28, June 28, so... Anyway, back to this. Kinda see where we're sitting for 236 for the revenues. Again, that contract, I think the only thing that changes on that is the fuel costs. Get to a certain threshold, they can, they can raise it, and I know that they did here recently, so I am gonna forecast a 3% increase because of that in July 24. So we'll see how this all plays out, but you can go back through here on the next page on the expenditures, and you can see where that comes from. Going to the expenditures, again, this is just a small increase, these are more just for salary increases. Again, we do pay, this is a service that's, provides revenue to the city, so therefore, we have to pay for the employee benefits, and we can't levy, so that's there. Contractual services, the main thing is their, their, their current is 175 for the contract. You can see we're right on, right on pace for that. There's some bulky item fees and stuff in that. Minor equipment, this is just for stuff like out the dump, I know Travis wants to build a push guard for leaves, push them all by all, collecting them. um, to push them all by all the way. Uh, but you can see that, that dropped significantly, of course, he did pay, I guess, five thousand last year from then over on it here. Um, other than that, pretty much all the same, uh, totality, we're down like two thousand dollars, we're up paying expenditures, if you go to the next page. So, as you see there, we're at two fifty-two, and the revenues are at two forty-one, so.
Any questions on the tall boys? And we'll park it up to the very end.
You can do that first if you want.
You're up.
Alright, I'll run through this quick, if you guys have questions, let me know. Um, I'm gonna start on parks, uh, salaries and wages, we bumped that from fifty-three to six thou- or sixty thousand, that's just increase on salaries and wages, or raises, things like that. Um, stay in the same rate of part-time, ten thousand. Um, down to employee benefits, group insurance, um, we actually dropped that by a hundred bucks, um, so four hundred there, two fifty for uniform. Um, staff development, same, uh, five hundred there, um, that'll go down to repair, maintenance, utilities. Um, so we've got ten thousand for building, maintenance, and repair. Uh, we had five thousand last year, so, um, without that extra five thousand, um, can be used for barns, um, potentially like a grant match or something like that, um, for that property, um, the nature park, um, so we bumped that up to ten thousand. Ground maintenance and repair, um, seventeen thousand five hundred, um, this is gonna now take into consideration, um, our new sports complex properties, there's gonna be some more expense. Um, we originally had fifteen thousand budgeted, we're sitting right around fifty, or forty-one hundred. Um, obviously, we still have like four or five months left this summer yet, um, for some of that stuff. Uh, vehicle operations, uh, five thousand. Vehicle repair, two thousand, that stays the same. Um, operational equipment repair, three thousand is what we had budgeted, we bumped that up to five thousand. Um, I've got more equipment, things like that. Um, electric, gas expense, total repair, maintenance, utilities, um, ten thousand for that, so that stayed the same. Uh, I'm gonna jump down to contractual services, uh, let's see here, insurance expense, up to sixty-five hundred. Payments to other agencies, one fifty. Programs, fifteen hundred, and other contractual services, uh, two thousand. Commodities, so minor equipment, nineteen thousand, well, if you remember, I, I, well, I budgeted last year to get a sander, I didn't end up getting it. Uh, so we added an extra three thousand there, just so I can purchase that this year, I'm gonna get with Travis, and we're gonna, uh, try to find one for the back of my tractor. Um, so that was nineteen thousand there. Um, nothing for grant expenditures, and then pool supplies, we budgeted five thousand for that. Um, I think we're pretty in good shape there, we got most of our pool supplies, um, ready, uh, Travis purchased already for this coming year too, so, and I think we'll be pretty comfortable at five thousand there. Um, the next thing will be, uh, other supplies, we budgeted three thousand. Now, that was up about eight hundred bucks from last budget time, miscellaneous, uh, just a hundred bucks. And then playground equipment, thirty-five hundred, um, the reason that we bumped that up so much is because I'm working with the four H group here in town to try to make our city park more handicap accessible. Um, so they're actually right now planning to order two, um, handicap picnic tables, um, and then they will also be ordering a piece of handicap playground equipment, and we'll be helping that with, helping them with that project, covering half of the total expense. So they've offered to pay half of the total project, um, and after talking to Brandon, we agreed that we would pay the other half. I'm gonna help them out with that project, it's something I've always wanted to do, um, so I'm happy to get that going.
Very cool.
Does anybody have any questions on parks? I have, so, I have a total budget, do you guys have one sixty-three, four hundred on yours? Do they have your copy, Brandon?
I think actually one sixty-one.
Okay, so you did, yeah, so that's what I have to, I have one sixty, one four hundred, so that's total for the park budget.
Do you want to discuss the request from?
Yes.
The park preservation today?
Yes, so I had a meeting, um, I met with Becky this morning for a little bit, um, just to talk about some stuff. And they have a group, they're called Edwards Creative, um, they specialize in development of parks and museums. Um, there's somebody that they're, uh, I think Anne is actually, I mean, if I have time with the snow, I'm gonna try and sit in the meeting, but they're going to be discussing a possible partnership on our property over there. Um, Becky came to me today, um, I just wanted to make sure, or see if it was possible for me to budget for something like that. The total cost, from my understanding, from her, was six thousand dollars. Um, Brandon and I discussed, um, prior to this meeting, and we agreed that we're gonna budget the ten thousand there under building, maintenance, and repair, and allocate some of those funds that can potentially be used for the barns or something on that property. I don't know what you guys want to do about that, if you want me to budget more there to try to help cover some of those things. Um, we also talked about doing fundraisers, things like that, um, today. Um, so I guess, just looking for your guys' guidance on what, what you guys wanna do. Um, Brandon and I have talked about this a lot, um, so, yeah.
So when, when you guys go through these budgets, um, obviously these are individual city budgets, but in the, um, in the state's eyes, history center, historic preservation, parks and rec, community beautification, uh, library, these are all one budget, uh, category. So, um, they all come out of the general fund. And the general fund is where the money is what it is, there's not a lot of, nothing really to do, um, per se, to, you know, to keep, keep taxes where they're at and, and all that stuff, so. Um, this kind of leads into that correspondence stuff with all the emails, with the memos that I forwarded on to you. Um, it's been my direction since I started, that the sports complex was top priority, uh, to get that going and completed, um, help bring in revenue to the city, and hopefully it will. Um, and then with extra funds as needed, allocate towards some of this other stuff. Um, I think we've made tremendous progress over at the nature park. Uh, we got the underground water line running down, uh, to help with the pond, um, level. Uh, we got the windmill back on, we've made numerous repairs in the barns. Um, obviously, the storms caused more damage, we, we fixed the roof twice on one barn. Um, you know, we've done the history center wall, we've done some work on the library, there's a lot of things that we've done under this, these, this category. And I just need direction, you know, my plan is to put five thousand in the west wall of the library, five thousand in the west wall of the history center, hopefully we can use those funds as matching, that's my intent. But just know that we can't do all this stuff, um, just because, uh, the money's not there to, to do that, so. If my direction needs to be something different than what I'm doing now and what Grayton's preparing for, I need to know that. But I just wanna give you guys a heads up that we are still allocating money to some of this, and it may not be all of what is requested, but it's what we can afford, I guess, uh, for.
Various, various committees can always go out and disclose the funds.
I just like to see those buildings be safe and secure as far as public is concerned. And, uh, obviously, we can't fix them all up.
What, the barns you're talking about?
Yeah. Like to see it secure so kids don't wander in there and get hurt. Keep it standing, and maybe you'll be grant money or donations down the line to do more.
I mean, that, this is the part, the hard part about doing the budgets, is where, who, where you say yes, where you say no to. Um, my, my personal opinion is, we got two major projects that we are going, one is starting to be, uh, actually three, watering and streets, some streets, and partisan, or the ballast is over there. I mean, that's where, I mean, we've, I think the nature park looks nice as it is right now, I know they wanna do more, but with them doing more, you know, you put mulch around everything, you know, put benches out there, put a gazebo, whatever, I mean, I understand all that stuff, but that also takes more time to mow that, it takes more time to clean up and everything, keep it clean and everything. I mean, where, right now, they can go in there and mow ninety percent of it and be done with it, you know, and. I'm not, I'm not, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't put any money into this, 'cause I think we should, but I'm just saying, I think our priorities should be, we need to fix our water streets that we tore up this year, and finish our water lines, and we need to finish the sports complex that we started. So we can start bringing revenue in off that sports complex. That was our main, that was our main goal when we did the sports complex, was to get revenue coming in out of it.
So I'm gonna proceed that way, um, obviously, the history center, historic preservation, library is all next meeting, but I just, you know, I kind of lead into that correspondence part, um, I just wanted you guys to know that, what, what the plan is, and if I need to do something different, to let me know. Um, and I think on this, like I said, it was presented today, I think Drake, if I'll have him go to that meeting, figure out exactly what it details, and then bring it back before you, and maybe there's opportunities where there's funding yet this year, or, um, see where we're at with that.
I agree.
Anybody have question on parks?
Alright, recreation should be a quick one here, salaries and wages, twenty-seven thousand, that is the same as last year. Um, association dues, two hundred dollars. Um, under repair, maintenance, utilities, building, maintenance, and repair, now just keep in mind, most is, I mean, mostly all this stuff comes out of parks. Um, so building, maintenance, and repair, uh, we actually dropped that down to five hundred. Um, ground maintenance and repair, nothing, operational equipment repair, nothing, and then, uh, just my telecommunications expense, a thousand dollars there. Um, contractual services, insurance expense, fifteen hundred, payments to other agencies, twenty-five hundred. Um, Halloween Town, a thousand, um, programs, two thousand, and then other contractual services, a hundred. Some of these things dropped just last year, I requested a little bit more money, like Halloween Town, to get some new stuff. That's all been taken care of, so that's why you see a, a drop in some of them. Minor equipment or commodities, twenty-five hundred, um, office supplies, a hundred, soccer, thirty-five hundred. Basketball, uh, eighteen hundred, baseball, softball, and T-ball, two thousand, and then football, flag football, twenty-five hundred. Um, miscellaneous items, two hundred, which brings a running total of forty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars, which I believe is.
Is that enough, Green?
Yes, got off two thousand, nineteen hundred bucks.
Yep.
So, um, I'm gonna go back to parks. So if you don't need mowers or anything like that, weed eaters or whatever?
Nope, we just bought a brand-new mower, like, in two, not quite two years, um, from Hustler, Fat Guys now, so we've got two mowers. Um, both run great, both maintain regularly out there, um, so I don't see any need for anything, um, to get mowing done. Obviously, I have my new tractor, um, for schnau, so I don't see any reason, that also gets maintained, uh, not a kind of irregularly. I don't see any reason why I would need, um, anything else for mowing or shovelable.
Good. Any questions on, are you doing parks?
Uh, I'm done with parks, yes, recreation, the only other thing was my capital improvement fund, um, the fifty thousand that we put in for the sports complex each year.
Any questions?
Brandon, you mentioned that, that the budget's tight for this, and yet it appears it's gone up like twenty-five thousand dollars in parks.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Or a tight budget?
Well, that's, that's kinda adding all that stuff in there, I mean.
And you just asked us for guidance, but it's in there, so.
Well, that, I, I guess that was.
Are there things to tighten up, or do we not approve this?
That's, there, that's, um, so that's kind of where I'm, I was going, is like, this is, there, there's gonna be an increase in here, and there's still more money being requested, and that's, that's my concern with, with, I am good with, we sat down and looked through this, and I'm comfortable with this.
Yeah.
I just, there's more requests on top of it, and that's where I get a little bit concerned with, you know, going forward. And the reason, you gotta remember, the reason a lot of this is for is, now that the sports complex, we're maintaining it. So, that's, that's gonna be, you know, fertilizer, gas.
Yeah, that's understandable, but we're also talking about historic preservation projects, or other things to improve the, the barns. I, with John, let's just lock them up, but.
Yeah, I, I guess that was my point with, I, I know there's an increase in parks already in recreation, and there's just, we just gotta be careful on the general fund items, to be getting crazy on spending over and above what is here.
And there, there are naturally.
What's that?
Historic preservation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions for Grayton? Thank you guys.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
What's everybody doing tonight?
Beautiful, how are you doing?
Good, good, getting over a head cold, so sorry about that.
I want to say one thing, and I've got, and I were, said it, said on the news of these last night, morning, whatever, about these towns that are losing their animals and services, 'cause they don't have the, they were, they were even talking during nights, they were just talking EMTs. I mean, and we got two land units at all times.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much, you know, we, we only stacked the one, but like today, we had both trucks out, um, you know, we had our paramedics out a couple of times today already as well. Um, kind of assisting other agencies while still providing, you know, the temperature.
I mean, it's just awesome that, you know, that small towns like this can, and not us, but you guys can find these people to do that.
Yeah, we're, we're incredibly fortunate right now, we, we're sitting on a roster of thirty-three, um, with two on leave of absence, and I've got people that are still asking to get in, and, and, you know, if I get much more than that, then I have people texting me saying, I can't get ours, what are we gonna do? So we're, you know, thirty-five is kind of our sweet spot, so we're, we're sitting at a great, great place right now. Um, you know, and, and that's kind of one of the big things, is having that support from the cities, and having the ability to see what's gonna happen in the future. Um, you know, I brought some numbers for the, the report later on, but we finished the year with nine hundred and eighty-eight responses that we answered, but we were paged a thousand and eight times, um, so there were some transfers, things like that, that we don't determine are mandatory, um, that we turn down, but, you know, that's also revenue that's being left on the table because of, of different reasons. Um, but the primary reason is, there's times where if we would accept a transfer, it would leave our community unprotected, and we don't believe in doing that, so. But, to the budget, um, you know, really, there's, there's not a lot of changes, most of it accounts for salaries, um, and then just rounding a number, it's honestly one of them. Um, so, uh, I kind of talked to Brandon a little bit today about salaries, so usually the board, um, will approve anywhere from two and a half, three percent to five percent raise, uh, for myself, and I don't foresee that being any different this year, um, depending on how things come back. Um, you know, we, we are fortunate that we do have an order in for a new SUV as well as an order in for a new ambulance, we're not coming to the cities for any help with that. Um, that's all been money that's been set aside or grants that we've been able to obtain, so that's three hundred and forty thousand-ish dollars that, um, the ambulance was able to find through various avenues.
Unbelievable.
So, we're, we're sitting in a much better spot than five years ago, when I, it was another seven good day. So, um, you know, we're sitting in a much better spot than we were seven years ago. And as you guys may remember me talking about last year, my biggest concern is as we continue to grow, as our needs continue to expand, you know, the aging community, growing communities, we need to be prepared for that next level. Um, you know, I would hate to be caught in a situation like Little Plejery, uh, Tiffin, uh, which I wrote is nowhere near theirs, but where, you know, they needed full-time firefighters five years ago, and they're just now starting to, to get some base staff in there to help augment their volunteers, help provide some of that training, that oversight, um, and some of the day-to-day activities that, you know, will end up on my plate, or, you know, I like to say, I've got about four full-time volunteers, that if they decide to go and get full-time jobs, or, um, one of them's a flight nurse in Hawaii, so he's with us twenty days a month, and then leaves us for ten, you know, if I lose those resources, I'm gonna be, you know, up a creek without a paddle, so. I'm just being able to prepare for that. So that's, that's what the contractual services are for, and then, like I said, you guys made the decision to take me on as an employee, um, with the, with the reimbursing salary, uh, two, three years ago? So, that's been huge as well. So I guess you have any questions on, on numbers right now, or?
One thing I did, you'll see it count down, um, we are gonna move the hypers to one twelve, which is that employee benefits levy. Um, we're gonna talk to them and get that moved to there, so. that moved to there, so, you'll see, it went down, um, I think Jake did bump it up to his, tell me, sixty-five hundred, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, just kind of looking at the trend.
So, that's, that's pretty much the difference between last year and this year, um, so, that's the only difference there.
And, you know, I mean, what are, what we like to see up here as council, is we like to see growth in our community residential, and when we can, someone comes in there and says, you know, they got an ambulance service that's unbelievable, they got fiber services, both towns are unbelievable, I mean, that's a big plus, uh, a big plus selling point, you know, I mean, we're...
Well, we're bringing people into town too, so I've got another, um, volunteer that we're trying to steal from E-Lee, he runs with us and comes and hangs out, and, um, is actually possibly gonna be looking at a house in Lisbon, so that would be, I believe, a fourth or fifth that we've got to move up to the area, so, you know, we give them a reason to be here and wanna, wanna stay here, you know, for the community, and, and make sure they'll, so...
Excellent.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, you mentioned. Discussion possible action and reference to changes to fire department's bylaws.
Okay, um, not to skip ahead, but under the appointments, and I talked about this under the fire department budget, um, we're wanting to go ahead with the second assistant chief, um, and I talked about that during our budget presentation, and there, at the time, wasn't any questions or concerns, so, I went through and added that language, um, so you can see, these haven't been updated since two thousand and five, so it's pretty straightforward, um, with how we're operating, we're just adding that language in there.
Happy to answer any questions, Chad. Any questions? So, do we need to make a motion to accept the bylaws?
Yeah, so, you'll have to, yeah.
Do a motion to accept the bylaws?
Submove.
Are the changes to the bylaws?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. Discussion possible action and reference to changes to fire department constitution.
All right, so this one is just saying thanks, adding, um, the second assistant. If you go to page... Says two of eight.
Eight?
Yep. Um, under section three, that's the language that we're changing there. Or adding, I should say, not changing.
So, it's number seven for the day, six, six or seven.
Just saying, me. These get changed a little bit more periodically, this was like a two thousand and fifteen version, so... Do a motion?
Submove.
Do a motion, or a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Set public hearing for budget amendment for February twelfth, twenty-eight and four. Uh, this will be budget amendment, I believe it's number two, is that correct, Christina?
Yes, it is, number two.
I thought you fell asleep.
No.
Hey, Christina?
Yes.
You know that yellow piece of paper to have, well, I'll talk to you about it.
Okay.
All right. So, I need a motion to set the public hearing.
Motion, motion to set the public hearing for two-twelve.
Do a motion, or a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Resolution, appointments.
Uh, so that's the new annual appointments that, uh, you guys approved, you can go through the list there, um, different boards, um, commit, um, they're within the city, um, so you have Mayor Protem, City Clerk, City Attorney, Official Newspaper, Police Advisory Board, Park and Rec Board, Historic Preservation, uh, Fire Department, this is where the second assistant was added, E-nine-one-one, Lynn County Emergency Management, Ambulance Board, and then the new Library, is also part of that, that took effect January first.
Do you have a motion?
Submove.
Do you have a motion, or a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion, or a second? Kevin?
Yeah.
John?
Aye.
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 Kevin's, Kevin, Kevin, don't call me, please. Resolution, oh-two, twenty-four, council liaisons. This is what I was gonna say, Christina, you gave me that piece of paper?
Yes.
And I gave it back to you?
You did?
No, I found it. But, every, everything's gonna, everything will stay the same, except for where Sarah, it'll be transferred into Kevin's name.
Okay, I couldn't get that updated.
I got the piece of paper right here still, I'll give it to Brandon. Do you have a motion, or a...
Motion to approve the, uh, appointments and council liaisons with the change from Sarah Noss to Kevin Steele.
Do you have a motion, or a second?
Second.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Did that one, correspondence?
Uh, those are just the emails, um, that were sent me in with the memos to council, um, about the request.
City Engineer Board?
Only thing I have is working with Travis, try to look at options for the water plant at all five, in order to reduce the iron and manganese, and let me take a look at our labor plant that, uh, is over Mount Run, and that gave us the, right, the, uh, west side, and, uh, also looking at some channel filters, uh, pressure filters, as well as an aerator and a detention tank. So, we'll visit a couple of sites, talk with operators, and let him get a feel for what those costs are, and then we'll come back with recommendations.
Any questions for Dave?
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Other word?
Um, I can cover mine, just cover. Question, or?
Um, not a lot, uh, we had our Christmas event, parade, and Santa Miss Claus and the fire station, for those that were there saw it was a huge success, um, we had a lot of people show up, um, for both the parade and coming to meet Santa Misses Claus, so a big thanks to everybody that helped me with that, um, especially my Park and Rec Board. Uh, boys' basketball's supposed to start Wednesday, we'll see, um, after this storm, what the plan is, first practice is on Wednesday, uh, with this week, and if not, it would start Saturday, our first games will be the twentieth of January, and that'll go into, uh, middle and late February. Um, other than that, I'm ready for the snow, and, yeah, that's it.
Anybody have anything for Drake? So, you swarming? Uh, nothing, I'm doing great. Do you have a bunch?
Um, like I said, we, we finished up, again, this year, nine eighty-eight, up from nine hundred and eleven last year, um, over a thousand requests for service, so expect kind of a, a little bit more in-depth annual report mixed in with our new strategic plan, um, probably in the next couple of weeks, um, so we have a, a board meeting Wednesday, where they'll, they'll officially accept the strategic plan, which focuses a lot on our community outreach, community education piece, as well as strengthening our service, um, you know, ongoing, which is big, so...
And, any questions?
Heard you. Okay, may have reported last time, but the new grass truck is in, uh, border Lynch, it'll be transported back over here, uh, we're looking at March, April timeframe to get that to felled fire, to get the, the box and the pump and all that put on to the back, um, so that's, uh, exciting times that that finally came in. Uh, Saturday night, we did our, um, appreciation supper out at Tin Roof, um, we had some awards that we gave out, and we got the list here, uh, five years of service, Jonah White, ten years of service, Captain Tyler Smith, twenty years of service, Jake Siggins and Jeff Silver, thirty years of service to Bruce Gray and Joe Long, and thirty-five years of service to Captain Dale Happel. So, I'd like to thank all those members for their continued years of service, um, Lisbon's lucky to have this group of people that, um, are on the police department, the fire department, and the ambulance service, 'cause, uh, they're really second to none, and, uh, they all do a great job, and it makes my life easier. That's all I have.
Anything to, for, for you? City Engineer?
Uh, went to E-nine-one-one meeting up in Lynn County, uh, last week, um, discussing with Lisa, uh, from Y-A-T-T, reference to the number of the sports complex, uh, I'm gonna probably go over those next month's meeting, um, with you, when we talk about spending some of the lost money, um, to see where we go with that. Our banners that are up on the, the lights out here are kind of tattered, um, I'm gonna be working with some local, uh, sign folks to, um, get some different banners, and I think I'm gonna probably try to get the Cecil Centennial banners, uh, since that's, uh, upcoming, um, if I get them in July, that'd be a year and a half that they could, they could be up, uh, minus the Christmas holiday, but I think that'd be good to, let people get attention for that, again, that's in, uh, next year, twenty-five.
You're talking about banners, we talked about over on Slade Line, putting...
Yep, so, um, Travis happened on that today, we're gonna take a look at some, uh, especially at Christmas time, for putting on there, but you'll see on those tall overhead lines, they have the spikes that are coming out the side, going up for banners, when I talked to Brad about that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, see, see what we can do with those, they're a little different style than what these are?
Yeah.
Those out there are kind of spring-loaded, where you put them together, put the sign on, and then they flex back out, so, um, I'm also gonna look at that when I do that.
Sure.
Um, been working a lot on budget stuff, which is pretty common for this cut, time of year, um, Keith has started, uh, Public Works, fitting in really well, he's running the ropes, um, going around, getting all the different things down that he has to do, and now he's gonna get a little baptism by fire with the snowstorm, so, uh, I'm sure he'll do well. Uh, had several meetings with personnel committee and the library board over several really good candidates, uh, that we interviewed for the library director position, um, really excited to, to meet the new library director, uh, when she starts. Public Works guys have been, um, doing some work down at Sewer Plant, uh, maintenance work on vehicles, they're also, um, doing all the services with the fire trucks, um, oil change units and what have you, they're out picking up the Christmas trees, um, and then a lot of us just getting everything ready for the, for the snow this week, so, uh, that's pretty much all I have, I have to answer any questions that you have.
So, we're supposed to get hit with snow tonight, tomorrow, and get ahead again this wind this weekend?
Yes.
A big cold.
Yep.
Yippee.
They have a pretty good schedule figured out for how they're gonna rotate in with that extra person, it makes it, you can kind of go in two shifts, so, uh, there's gonna be, uh, Jake and Travis on the crew, Ryan and Chris on the crew, and then Keith's gonna go with one of them, uh, kind of learning what's, what's going on, and things like that, so...
Are you putting them on a research in on how many hours?
Uh, they're gonna have to start with twelve-hour shifts, um, and then we'll see what, what's keeping it after that, um, looks like it's gonna snow till about three o'clock tomorrow afternoon, possibly up to six o'clock, and then Lynn kicks in, so, uh, we'll just see what happens.
That it?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any question, Brandon?
You?
Ground's all made.
Um, I don't have anything else, just say welcome to Kevin, and, uh, thank you to all the fire department autories and those, uh, very long, long derities of, uh, being our department, and that commitment to the town, it's awesome.
Well, that's why you're there.
Yeah, exactly.
On pride.
Mike?
He stole all my thunder, welcome.
I knew you were gonna say that too. I knew it. John?
Mr. Smarty Pants.
John?
Just thank you to all the fire department and ambulance service volunteers, uh, I'm seeing on the news that a lot of communities are having a lot of problems maintaining, uh, those rosters.
And welcome to Kevin. Kevin?
Just, uh, I don't know the answer to this question, who does, is Lisbon under a snow room, is he right now?
Yeah, the police, the police declare now.
The police declare now?
It used to be the city would declare, but the police do it now.
Okay. Okay.
Result's, welcome Kevin, and I talked to Kevin, I said, told him, it gets overwhelmed, they ask questions, I mean, no questions are stupid questions.
Lot of stupid answers, though.
But, it's fine, it's, 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 and I said, and I told him, I said, don't take anything personal, you need to keep everybody happy. Just welcome Kevin, and, you know, like that, about four years' length. That's it.
Thank you.
All right.